We'll start with the flag salute, like by Mr. Palmer.
The flag salute is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to say we had an executive meeting at 6:30 before the board meeting began. Mrs. Dawson, your vote called. Yes, Mrs. Sauer, President, Mr. Hauser. Mrs. Cozart.
Here.
Mrs. Mayes.
Here.
Mr. Waller.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. George.
Dr. Locke.
Here.
They were going to, um, delight in a scene of high choral entertainment this evening, but it was up here removed, so they couldn't come. Welcome to Christmas Entertainment.
Um, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Rachel Surtin. She's our senior high school choir director, and these are members of our senior high school choir, chamber choir. Um, their concert is tomorrow evening at 7:00 P.M.
Wednesday?
Wednesday. I'm thinking it's Tuesday.
A wild guess.
Wednesday evening, so once we get a taste of what they're going for for us tonight, I know that we are all going to want to be, as all heard on the start of the day.
Thank you, to the side or the end of the floor. My full, positive case meeting, and we will start with crowd.
(singing) Hallelujah bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Becare away! Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to the middle, he can't afford. Ding dong, he knows, that is his song, tick, twinkle, wink, all for him. One sees you hear words of good cheer from everywhere, feeling here. All of them are raising their sound, darling, they're telling their truth. Giggling, the people sing songs of good cheer, Christmas is here. Tiddly, 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 this stuff. Tiddly, 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 this stuff. All of these and all of that, and there's a good time to everyone. Hallelujah bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Becare away! Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to the middle, he can't afford. Ding dong, he knows, that is his song, tick, twinkle, wink, all for him. One sees you hear words of good cheer from everywhere, feeling here. All of them are raising their sound, darling, they're telling their truth. Giggling, the people sing songs of good cheer, Christmas is here. Tiddly, 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 this stuff. Tiddly, 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 this stuff. All of these and all of that, and there's a good time to everyone. All of these and all of that, and there's a good time to everyone. Ding dong, ding dong.
Next we have a Merry Christmas.
(singing) We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good tidings we bring to you and your dear. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Oh, bring us some, bring us some down, bring us some, bring us some down, bring us some, bring us some out here. Good tidings we bring to you and your dear. And we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. For we all like figgy pudding, for we all like figgy pudding, for we all like figgy pudding, so bring some out here. Some out here, good tidings we bring to you and your dear. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we won't go until we won't go, we won't go until we won't go, and we won't go until we've got some, so bring some out here. Good tidings we bring to you and your dear. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. A Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
(singing) Angels we have heard our cry, sweetly singing all the place. And the mountains in reply, echoing their joyous screams. Come to Bethlehem, see, the Jerusalem angels sing. Come adore on the day thee, Christ the Lord, the new king. Gloria, et exaltis teo.
One final song this evening, the Holly and the Ivy. I'm actually going to use the PFM. Ah, yes, voice first.
(singing) The Holy and the Ivy, the rising of the sun. The Holy and the Ivy, when they are both around. All the trees that are here, the Holy bears the crown. Oh, the rising of the sun and the running of the deer. The playing of the merry, and we sing in the choir. The Holy bears the crown, as white as their living flowers. And Mary bore sweet Jesus Christ, who be our sweet Savior. Oh, the rising of the sun and the running of the deer. The playing of the merry, and we sing in the choir. The Holy bears the crown, as white as any light. As Mary bore sweet Jesus Christ, who doth sing as joy. Oh, the rising of the sun and the running of the deer. The playing of the merry, and we sing in the choir. Oh, the Holy and the Ivy, the rising of the sun. As Mary bore sweet Jesus Christ, who be our sweet Savior. The Holy and the Ivy, the rising of the sun. The Holy bears the crown, as bitter as any wine. And Mary bore sweet Jesus Christ, on Christmas Day in the morn. Oh, the rising of the sun and the running of the deer. The playing of the merry, and we sing in the choir. The Holy and the Ivy, the rising of the sun. Oh, the rising of the sun, as joy in the year. The playing of the merry, and we sing in the choir. The Holy and the Ivy, now all our food and bread. Among the trees that are in the wood, the Holy bears the crown, the crown.
We hope you have a wonderful Wednesday. The band is all doing performing, and it's going to be a great time. So, Merry Christmas, and thank you for having me. Thank you, Holly and I, we appreciate it very, very much, thank you. Good job, great job. I see you Wednesday. Wednesday at lunch, too. Oh, yeah, great job, Holly. We're starting, we're starting with the girls. You were like, you were like, ah. All right, um, next we have hearing the visitors, part one. This is the time when anyone can come forward to the podium and speak on anything that's on tonight's agenda. At a later time, you can speak on things that aren't on the agenda. If you do have any concerns, you come to the podium and state your name and purpose. It's seen none, and we'll move for the adoption of resolution number 115, the approval vote. A few minutes of the last meeting. It's been moved in second, any questions? Seen none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes unanimously. Solicitors report, make us.
I recommend that you move on resolution 116, student disciplinary matter number two of the 1415. This matter has already been discussed in executive set of the board. So.
Set.
It's been moved in second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. The resolution passes unanimously. For the legislative report, I have no report. We're going to move the, um, EWC TC till later, because we do have a presentation. So, we'll move to finance, Mrs. Alden.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to have a presentation by Mr. Shear.
If I may, I'd like to introduce Scott Shear, um, representative from public financial management. I asked him to come tonight to speak and talk a little bit about the services that a financial advisor provides for our school district for various reasons, one of which is an upcoming loan refinancing opportunity we have. So, Scott, take it away.
All right, well, good evening. I, uh, I'm not sure if I have enough copy, and I got, you're sure? Might need to share a little bit, if you don't mind, I should. I should have 14 or 15. Good? All right, well, again, good evening, Scott Shear with Public Financial Management out of our Harrisburg office. So, I'm just going to go through a few of the slides, don't get too worried if I go through each one of these slides page by page. Um, but it looks like you have a pretty full agenda. But I think, again, I just want to hit on a few of the highlights. And again, number one, a little bit about PFM in my firm, um, a little bit about how we think we can assist the school districts in some of its upcoming financing and upcoming needs, uh, and then talk about a few other things. As we go through this, if you have any questions related to the page that we're talking about, or just anything at all generally related to this matter, don't hesitate to stop me. Happy, again, happy to answer any questions you may, you may have. So, with that, why don't we start with page, page three? Just a little overview of PFM. Uh, we are the number one ranked financial advisor in the nation. We have a little over 500 different professionals nationwide, and you can see the map down near the bottom of various offices located across the country. We do have a few in Pennsylvania, um, you'll see there. Again, Harrisburg, the headquarters for the Pennsylvania Local Government Practice, which, again, is what I run, is out of our Harrisburg office. Uh, there's a crowd, half a dozen or so of the folks like myself that hop in the car typically Monday through Thursday, go to board meetings across the state, advising counties, school districts, townships, boroughs, municipal authorities, Commonwealth, kind of you name it, um, higher institutions, other 501(c)(3)'s. And we basically advise kind of from A to Z related to various financial matters. And we'll get a little bit more into that. As far as kind of our exposure in the market, you see with basically a third main whole point there. Uh, in 2013, we advised over 46 billion, uh, debt issuance, and Pennsylvania in 2013, about 4.5 million. So, you'll see from this slide a few others, we are in the municipal market and bond market, kind of in the financing world, very, very frequently, uh, so we know the market very well. Uh, when it comes time to market your, your, uh, your bonds, if you do have refinancing or new money projects to finance, we know where they should price, we know where the fee should be, um, we know what these investors are looking for, and can partner with your underwriter to make sure you have a very successful transaction. On the left-hand side, you see, uh, kind of the blue banner, uh, some of the different categories where we have ranked number one in 2013, uh, in various issues, some of the ones that are specifically maybe related to the school district as far as negotiated transactions, tax exempt transactions, and qualified transactions and new money and funding, which I think the schools should have done, uh, some of those over the years. Uh, as far as sectors, primary and secondary education, I think it'd be ranked number one across the country in that, and a couple of few others. As far as kind of driving that home more into Pennsylvania, you go to page four. This gives you a brief illustration of what our experience, um, is here more locally. Again, we've been the number one ranked financial advisor for over 25 years in the PA. Advise on more debt issuance than anyone than any other financial advisor or, uh, underwriter. And so, on the left-hand side, the chart with the blue banner, this just gives you a quick illustration of where we rank among other financial advisors in the Commonwealth, both as far as number of transactions and until volume or the per dollar amount of transactions. Then on the right-hand side, you see where we rank among underwriters across the state. Now, key difference here, we are not a bond underwriting firm. Uh, the school district has traditionally been Jane McCumber Scott in the past. We're not proposing to change that, this is due to a lot of new regulations. This would be a compliment, uh, to the team. But again, on the right-hand side, the story shows where we stack up among various underwriters that do a fair amount of business here in the Commonwealth. You see RBC, Bank of America, PNC, Morgan Stanley, Jane McCumber Scott, Ben Skater, and a few others. So, again, from a volume standpoint, and from seeing the market, knowing what investors are looking for, knowing how to search for the transaction property, we are in the market very frequently to, to be able to recognize, you know, different advantages in our school district. On page five. Page five is just a very brief sampling, and the appendix, we have a much more comprehensive client list. So, page five is giving you a brief illustration of some of the school district clients that we have in the western part of the state, as well as just, you know, again, a small sampling of other, you know, whether it's townships, community colleges, sanitary authorities, uh, city Pittsburgh, kind of you name it, we sort of do the whole, whole range. Myself personally, uh, I work on a pretty wide mix of issuers that I mentioned. I do a lot of school districts, uh, that is what we focus on, but I also do a lot of economic development, financing, uh, do a lot of water and sewer, uh, and then other general municipal, both county and, uh, and city lines. But again, I do focus very, very heavily in the education sector. Page six, one thing that we always promote and advocate in our firm are teams. So, although I would be the face, I would be kind of the ones, uh, calling the shots, devising the plans, uh, behind the scenes and coming to the meeting, I can't do everything on my own. Uh, so for basically every client that we have, we have, we have a team of, you know, a core team member, and this just gives you a brief illustration. So, I've been doing this, kind of running around the Commonwealth for a little over 16 years now. Uh, my background is actually in actual world of sciences, so kind of afforded a lot of math, a lot of insurance, a lot of finance, figured out what's right for me, uh, so I got into all the finance realm. I knew I liked it, uh, so again, basically what I spend my time doing, uh, Monday through Friday, but a lot in the evening, Monday through Thursday, attending board meetings and advising our, our client base across the country, well, across the state and sometimes across the country on, on some of these issues. And again, so you see some of the other folks, uh, so again, we always want to make sure that if I'm at a meeting, if I'm on the road, unable to take a phone call, and there's something important that needs to be taken care of, it's not just me, but it's a couple of other folks that would be, um, specifically related to regular jobs, so you can always reach someone to get a question answered.
Who's our guy? Who's our guy that Dan will talk to mostly?
I'm sorry?
Who would be the team member that Dan will talk to?
That would be myself.
All the time?
Yes, yep. So, again, the only time that Dan will not be able to talk to me, let's say, is if I'm at a meeting, uh, then he knows he can reach that guy or some of those other folks, but I would be the main, main point person, the one kind of handling all the day-to-day, lots of bolts. Uh, page seven, so what is an independent financial class? So, it is a little bit different than what the school district has done in the past. Um, there has been a lot of changes in, um, in the regulations in the municipal world over the past couple of years. A lot of that spurred by that frank legislation a few years ago, that federal legislation. But in, in simple terms, uh, you see on the first whole point on page seven, we're here to, to make sure that you get the best deal out there, representing your best interest. At the end of the day, we're the ones with the fiduciary interest in, in the school district. And you'll see in some of the other slides, um, that again, we're the main team member that is working on, on your behalf. So, when you look at, um, a couple of those points right below there, as far as what makes the most sense as far as selection of financing type, is it a bond issue, is it a bank loan, is it some other kind of financing? So, we'll look at all those various options. We have no vested interest in which one the school district ultimately takes. We want to make sure you ultimately best deal out there. As far as the method of sale, whether it's a competitive sale, negotiated sale, or some kind of hybrid, whatever, again, makes the most sense at any given time when the school district is contemplating some kind of transactions. Um, as far as negotiation of interest rates and commissions and various loan provisions, um, you know, we know the market very, very well. You saw from one of the other slides that when it comes time to actually pricing your bond, uh, should your interest rate be on any given day, should it be a 3%? Or should it be a 2.75%? Or what is really the right number for a school district of this caliber? So, we're the ones kind of working on your side of the table, hand in hand with you, to, to work with the underwriter for the negotiating sale. And if they put forth a 3% interest rate that you're paying your debt on, we're going to come back and say, well, no, based on all this, all these various facts, it should be a 2.75 or two and a half, or whatever the case may be. And also, they'll get the commission and the provisions related to that. If it's a bank loan, we're the ones working with you, going back to the bank, uh, and their legal counsel to change the provisions to make sure they're your, uh, they're in your best interest. Um, you know, again, the second main point, financial advisor and underwriters, or we could also put banks in there, are not mutually exclusive. And again, the key thing, uh, you know, if I do share it, it would be to the issuer, no one else. So, you see at the bottom, uh, with, with the arrows, and then in the middle, where it says Rule G17. That's one of the newer, um, kind of issues that probably your business office is having to deal with. I think it was probably around the summer of 2012, and that became effective. So, now, whenever the school district goes to do, uh, financing, it's typically a letter that needs to be signed either by the business office or by the board, uh, various board officers, basically to acknowledge certain things that an underwriter, uh, not working as the fiduciary of the school district, but not looking necessarily, um, for the best interest of the school district and an arm-length, um, transaction. But also, there's sort of other issues now embedded in that G17, um, letter that have become even more pronounced over the past year with new municipal advisors. So, there's kind of more and more rules are being placed on the issuer and some of the other participants as time goes on, and again, we're here to kind of help you navigate through all those to making sure that you're signing, um, all the right documents in conjunction with your solicitor and other professionals, whether they're financially related or legally related. So, again, down the bottom, we're sort of on the left-hand side with the school district as your fiduciary, and then on the right-hand side, you know, banks and the underwriters and the investors. I'm not saying they've ever done anything wrong, um, you're an underwriter that the district has worked with in the past very good, you do a lot of transactions with them, but you'll see that, again, they have, um, both a duty to try the piece of school district as well as, as well as their investors. And we're here to physically level off the playing field. Hey, Jay. The, just a brief, uh, big brief background on the G17 rule. You know, again, we've kind of hit on a lot of these issues, but it's now the underwriters have to disclose a lot more before a transaction is undertaken, uh, and again, your business office will probably not already have received one of these letters, uh, that seem to kind of be getting longer and longer. Uh, every time you see a new one where they're adding more and more, um, issues than, than need to be, uh, need to be analyzed. On the left-hand side, this is just a, a sample, we redacted a bunch of stuff, uh, a G17 letter, kind of a very simple one from a different underwriter, uh, but sort of the, on the bottom left-hand were the red dotted lines, where you see some of the different, uh, different points. You know, I, leisure, just kind of recommend reading those as far as where it said the underwriter has financial and other interests that defer from those of the issuer, uh, the underwriter doesn't have fiduciary duty, and kind of a few other things. So, basically, over, over the years, um, the SEC, uh, and some other, uh, folks have realized that, again, we're not saying anything about that way here in the school district, but across the country, there's been a fair amount of abuse where transactions- but across the country, there's been a fair amount of abuse where transactions were recommended. It may not have been in the best interest of a particular issue, state or school district or city, wherever the case may be, because some of those folks were profiting. And so this is sort of what that is cracking down on, and make sure before you do undertake a transaction that you do know it's in your best interest and the best interest of the taxpayers here. Page nine, just a, this is just a kind of a brief, sort of a brief outline of some of the main social services that we would provide in conjunction with your business office as well as just your finance team. We could have put a whole bunch more on this page, but this just kind of gives you a general flavor that when it comes to an engagement, whether it is a refinancing, whether it is a new money transaction, again, just some of the highlights, where we're helping the school district develop a plan, a menu and recommendation is appropriate. We know Act One extremely well. We know all the P D E related issues, we advise P D on a lot of different things. Have a lot of communication with them on a day-to-day basis. Act One, we know inside and out. Actually, like we started this business, that's when Act Fifty, kind of one of the initial tax reforms, was unveiled, and I was going around to probably half the school district around the Commonwealth developing models for them to analyze the impacts of that tax reform back then. So we know P D E very well. We know all the constraints you're dealing with under Act One. But when it comes time, not only financing-related issues with Act One, but just in general budget issues, again, we're here to help you navigate through all those sort of various things. Point number two, reviewing and preparing many of the documents in conjunction with your solicitor, bond counsel, and other team members. Coordinate with credit rating agency, that's very important to do. One thing that we do, we're trying to do a lot more of now, just to kind of get a little bit more personal with the rating agencies. Instead of just doing kind of the short phone call that is undertaken many times with your business office with the rating agency, depending on the circumstances, we try to make it a little bit more personal and sometimes even bite them down, rating agencies down to the school district if we feel that credit rating upgrade may be warranted or at least considered and kind of put on a dog and pony show with your business office to highlight all the good attributes of the school district and see if we can move that deal a little bit. The better the credit rating, the lower the interest rate, then the more savings you may realize with the refunding or the lower the impact is to the taxpayers here if you do need to borrow more money. So it's a very crucial step that we help lead through. Overall, point number four, to kind of lead the whole debt issuance process with your business office, making sure everything is in line and meeting all the deadlines. And again, negotiate various issues with the underwriter, interest rates, compensation. Ultimately then, you know, if you move forward with a negotiated sale with the underwriter record here, we follow up with kind of a pricing memo, letting you know that, yes, you did ultimately get the best deal out there and that it is okay to sign some of the various documents to get you to closing. It would be kind of based on our recommendation to sign that. And we've done that before where we had recommended the client not to accept a final proposal for the debt issuance, we didn't feel where the market should be based on that specific issue of credit rating. And so then we went to a different underwriter. So, you know, we put a lot of merit in when we have to sign various and apply on different things related to that issue. And so we ultimately, again, want to make sure that the school district is getting. Page 10, not to get into too much of the, we, page 10 is just a high-level overview of the district's outstanding debt. Now, just based on public information, we only had some of the data related to the 2005 bonds and 2012 bonds. So this does not include the bank loan that we've done last year, but we would easily incorporate that. So, you know, you see over in the far right-hand column, column four, roughly a little over $5 million of annual debt service. Now, we do, we are not reflecting any state reimbursement in this table, which ultimately we would with discussions with your business office to make sure we have the right percentages that are signed from P D E. We always look at both gross debt service, which is basically what we're showing here, which is the principal interest that you pay the bondholders, but also ultimately your net local effort, which takes into account the state reimbursement. So what we're going to be focused on here, which you probably have already heard a little bit about, is the 2005 bonds, those nice bond issue that is now able to be refinanced, so we'll get a little more into that. But whenever we kind of look at a transaction, not only do we, you know, we want to make sure that that specific transaction is done properly for the school district, but we always look at things in totality as well. Not just kind of channel vision that, okay, you have this for something to do, let's get that refunding done. It's how does it fit in with the overall plan of the school district? Does it make sense, when does it make sense to do the transaction? Are you contemplating, you know, maybe issuing additional new money for capital projects sometime in the near future? Well, if you are, do we want to potentially modify the structure of that existing debt issuance to help phase in any potential new money that you may have? Not saying you do have or you're going to be doing new money, but we again, always want to not only look at the transactions you're doing, but okay, what do you have in the horizon later this year, next year, two years down the road, to just make sure we're planning for things accordingly. So again, we always face a little bit of things, a list of them. Page 11, again, a little bit more detail on the actual refinancing opportunity. So again, what we're looking at is the '05 bonds. There's a little over $10 million outstanding. The call date or the refinancing, kind of the refinancing eligible date is April 1 of 2015. So again, legally now, basically at that point in time, a very short-term transaction, only a couple of years left on it. Typically on these kind of short transactions, you don't see a whole lot of net savings. But just based on these facts, I mean, we are able to, right now, based on current trades, look at estimated savings of about $28,000. Now that's, there's a little bit of conservativeness building into those interest rates. That's also net issuance costs. Now, what has not netted, which we would want to show you ultimately is, whenever you do a refinancing, since the state subsidizes a portion of your debt service, the state also wants a small portion of the savings that are realized. So ultimately, once we hone in on some of the details, the net number we would show you is not only net issuance costs, but net of the state's share of savings as well. And it's kind of certain, there's certain plan count rules that need to be followed that if you are modifying the structure at all of the new debt issuance, if you do refunding or restructuring, we want to make sure that you optimize the benefit and not the state. So again, there's different things that we need to do going through the plan count process to structure accordingly and follow the various plan count rules to make sure, again, you're benefiting a nice amount and not getting up more than you need to. So again, looking at about 300, a little over 300,000 of net savings. As far as, one of the metrics that you look at when you entertain a refunding, which the school district has done over the years, is what is the percent of those savings based compared to what you're actually refunding? So a rule of thumb, not, it's not set in stone anywhere, but certain agencies, G F O A, and a few others, can look at, if the net savings exceed, say, 2% or if the net savings exceed 3% of what you're refunding, you should at least entertain the idea of looking at it. And again, so right now, you're kind of above that benchmark. So I think that's one of the reasons why I'm here this evening, in discussion with your business office. If you do have the opportunity, it does make some financial sense to at least look at the transaction. If the market comes out, you can make it sit and know about it first. So basically, what's the whole point of this transaction? What we're showing here is not stretching after that, it's not changing structure. Taking your existing structure, matching it, you know, basically the same exact thing. And you're going from roughly a 4.97% rate down to something less than 1%, and that's what's generating those savings. As far as the timeline, you know, see me again, it's just an initial presentation, give you some time to digest everything, maybe come back in January if you wanted to at that point, give the finance team, basically give them a great light to move forward, start preparing the documents. Potentially, we could come back in, for your later meeting in January, with some of the various financial and legal documents for the board to entertain. If we're ready by then, that would be what we would try to target, if not, come back in early February at when your board meeting at that point. And that's when we would lock in the interest rates, lock in savings, and break everything out of the cost, so on and so forth, and then settle sometime in March, and then we'll call the box shortly thereafter. So from a timeline standpoint, you know, again, we're kind of right at the opportune time. We can go as slow or as fast as you like. There's usually a fair amount of delay with the rating agencies now. I mean, not only does your business office need to put together a lot of the information that investors need to see, and then we would kind of do a bunch of stuff as well, setting it up to the rating agency, sending it up to the insurance company, and then going through that process. That may take a little bit longer just because of various backgrounds that they have. Again, that just gives you a quick illustration of the timing. If you, just kind of briefly, the next section is an appendix with kind of a lot of stuff in here, which is more, again, more to leave behind, page 13. This just gets into, if you do need or are considering looking at some capital improvement plans in the future, we have lots of different tools and ideas to assist the school district. And again, just a few of them are available here on page 13, and we'll be happy to come back and talk to you more about. Page 14 just gets into a little bit of the plan count process. Pages 15, or page 15 is extremely important, and it looks like the school district is on top of this stuff very, very well. But one of the things in the forefront of the S E C mind these days is continuing disclosure compliance, making sure that you're uploading all the proper documentation to the investors that own your bonds around the country, very, very important these days. But again, it looks like you're doing great with that, and you assist to a climbing in anything that you may need assistance with. Page 16, other ongoing services going forward. Typically, what's part of our fee is the plan count process moving forward that gets paid. And basically, it's all part of the fee if the transaction is completed. We would help coordinate that and do that for the school district going forward. That's item number one. Item number two, continued disclosure, again, we would do all that with your business office. Other long-range planning and other things on this page that we could assist the school district with. And just again, a little bit of background, which we don't need to spend time on here this evening. And that goes kind of all the way through page 21. And basically, in summary, you know, we think we can add a lot of value to your transactions, assisting the business office in the transactions, but also ultimately making sure that taxpayers here in the district are getting the best deal possible out there. So point number one on page 22, you know, again, we already sort of discussed on the volume of transactions that we do and focus that we have an implication on how that may be of importance to the school district. Ultimately, we're the ones representing the best interest of the issuer throughout the process. And, you know, sometimes it sounds a little cheesy, but the third point, I mean, we're not a one-stop shop. We do a whole lot of different things that could assist you along the lines, whether it's today, whether it's five years from now, the long-range planning and other issues to make sure everything goes smoothly. So we do a lot, we don't have to sub anything out, we can kind of do basically everything else. And the rest of this, hand up. Again, page 23, just a brief file. So the next couple of pages gets into some of the detail with the refunding. We can kind of skip over the third page. And then basically, 29, 29 on is just a little more comprehensive client list of our school districts that we do across the Commonwealth. So again, I do, I personally, I do, you know, a fair amount. I do a lot of driving around the state, but I have a lot of clients in eastern part of the state, a lot of clients in the central part of the state, a lot of clients in the western part of the state. So I'm kind of all over the place. And with that, I will stop and take a breath and see if you have any questions or comments.
I have a question, Scott. What, how do you set up your fees? What is the case called?
If it's for a traditional transaction, just like all the other professionals involved, we would get paid at the closing of that transaction. So there'd be no necessarily a check made out of the general fund, we'd only get paid out of the percentage of the closing, that's right. And if the transaction does not get completed, we don't pay it off.
And what's your percentage?
It's typically based on the amount of hours we think will be needed to complete the project.
Do we know that ahead of time?
Yes, we would work with your business office on that. You know, I think they already gave out an estimated fee for this refunding. I believe that was $9,580. And so again, it really depends on the scope of the project. If it's for the capital planning and involving a lot more meetings, a lot more stuff, it just kind of involves more time and more hours, then it's going to be more than that. But for this refinancing transaction, what your business office and myself have spoken about, we would go to that. We think, again, especially just for this transaction, given the savings that we could provide from lowering the underwriter's commission and also lowering the interest rates a little bit, that would more than offset the fee related to our services.
Thank you.
Yeah, the total in this particular example that you worked up, the savings of the school district would be the $328,000, assuming, we get a lot of assumptions. And then the state gets a chunk of that back, I understand. And there's a lot of fees that come out of that before that's finally reached. What are those total fees roughly? Did you figure around, you know, I'm just filling you a quick, $700,000 or?
Yeah, if you turn to pages, let's see, 25, well, sorry, page 25. So on page 25, this is an amortization schedule of your existing 2005 bonds. You see in column two, the remaining principal, and column three, the interest rates. Column seven where it says state aid right now blank. Once we get the project eligibility percentage, we'll fill that in and be able to show it. But as a starting point, this is the existing bond issue that we're looking to refinance. If you then turn two pages over to 27, this would be the kind of hypothetical bond issue right now if we move forward. So in column two is the new principal, and column three are the new interest rates. Over in column 10 are the net savings. Again, right now, the way this is being structured, about $250,000 in the current fiscal year, and then the balance in the following year. Maybe some of the savings could be massaged a little bit to get them in a different fiscal year. But the state is pretty strict on where savings fall and making sure that you're not violating the debt act, that again, we work with your solicitor and bond counsel. They've always, that's always been part of the process, but there's kind of been a change of guard at D C D, and that's the Department of Community and Economic Development, where then they have to approve all bond issues. There was a change of guard a few years ago, and sort of the new regime takes a pretty tight view on the laws and some interpretative rulings make it more important than ever for us to make sure that your savings are falling in the right spot so that they don't decline on bond issue. That'll be a problem, so we need to make sure, you know, that doesn't happen. But to your point, on page 10, so that shows the saving net issuance cost. Now, what, that's net, I would turn to page 28. The way the transaction would work is under sources, you'd start out, you'd go out and issue about $10.5 million of bonds under the sources. Then under the uses, about $10.4 million would need to go to retire the old bonds, you'd kind of work with all those logistics. The underwriter's discount and the underwriter's commission, we have estimated at about $6,000 a bond, $63,000. We're assuming for this transaction that there would be no bond insurance, given how short the transaction is. That's something we would need to evaluate, come closer to time. We'd still buy a solicitor's proposal for bond insurance, it's just a matter of whether or not it makes sense. And then where it says cost of issuance, $60,000. That's just an estimate. I did not reach out to any of the existing professionals that are part of the team for the school district. But that's kind of a general ballpark. That would include bond counsel, solicitor, our fee, credit rating agencies, some printing, trustees, some of those kind of issues. Maybe that number comes in a little bit lower, maybe it comes in a little bit higher. Yeah, I mean, this is just an illustration to show you that we are netting out some issuance costs to get to those savings that we had shown on prior page. And so if you did before, we would ultimately break out that line that says cost of issuance and kind of break that out for each one of the particular line items.
If I can add, just so, Scott touched on this briefly. You know, this is all began, having Scott come here tonight, is I, we recognized we had a law coming that was called the 2005 bond issuance. So when I contacted Jane Montgomery to, you know, start working with, generating paperwork, they came back with that authorization letter. And as I was reading that more thorough, or closely, we started talking internally and thinking, do we need to add another layer in there? Also with the new M S R V requirements and the reporting regulations, there needs there needs to be a lot more oversight to make sure we meet the timeline and the deadlines. So that's why I asked Scott to come. You know, obviously, there's an additional cost for his services. We would hope, though, that his services would help to control other costs as well as, and he's said this numerous times, because I keep talking about issuance costs. I want to control my issuance costs. Because when you look at it, you're like, oh, that's twenty-five percent of the refinancing. You know, that's a significant portion. And while that is important, he makes sure that I don't lose sight of the benefit I think that they could potentially bring with making sure that we negotiate the lower rates. Because that's really where the true benefit comes to the district as far as savings, savings overall. So moving forward, what I would like to do, unless the board has any more questions here, is I'm going to talk following the meeting to announce the next meeting with this group and get some guidance as to, I'd like to move forward with refinancing, obviously, to at least see what's out there. We know that's April first. Do we want to move forward with the old manner in which we've operated, which we can continue to do so? Or would we want to consider working with a financial advisor? Again, it's just another added layer, another member of the team. We can still be working with an underwriter. We can still be working with bond counsel, solicitor, etc. So it's not replacing anybody, it's an addition too. So I don't want, you know, anybody confused that they would be replacing the service that we're already providing for the meeting, so. I leave anything off? Okay. Does anybody have any final questions for Scott? All right. Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you.
Back to you, Angela. I'll move for approval of resolution number one seventeen, the Treasury Report, and number eighteen, the Freedom Act, and number one nineteen, Budgetary Commandment. So. We move in second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, a resolution passes unanimously.
Move for adoption of resolution number one twenty to approve gifts, grants, and donations. These are, the big gift is from the Grigory Trope Partners in Education Foundation that we talked about at our reorg meeting. And also to accept the Central South Pennsylvania Intermediate Unit grant for second hundred fifty dollars for the Reserve Department.
That's been moved in second as well. Any questions or discussion? And then we thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, and that resolution passes unanimously.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number one twenty-one to approve the fund balance transfer from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Athletic Fund for athletic equipment purchases as of tomorrow.
Second. It's been moved in second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, and that also passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the next finding committee meeting will occur on Wednesday, January twenty-third at the Edmond Building at ten a.m. And at this time, we would like to go back to Mrs. Kuzar's portion with the EWCTC.
I'm going to introduce Mr. Wyman. Unfortunately, Danielle Carr is a student from EWCTC. To be recognized, a student of the month at EWCTC was unable to be here this evening. So we certainly want to recognize Todd, and maybe you can give us an overview of the program, and Danielle.
I could certainly do that. And those of you that know Danielle, there's certainly an outstanding circumstance for her not to be here this evening. When I called her in my office and let her know that the Secretary of Transit, Grady Laitrow, had invited her here, invited her here tonight, she accepted graciously and was very excited. So I'm hoping that nothing's wrong, she'd be here otherwise. From my perspective, Danielle being a cabinetmaker student, I just want to say that she's an outstanding student. She comes to school every day, she has a smile on her face every day, and she works hard, more than we ask for. She has recently participated in a couple of major projects at the EDC that I'd like to recognize first. We just recently dedicated our outdoor learning center, and she, amongst her classmates, all were responsible for designing and producing the furniture. And those of you who have been able to see it can attest to how terrific a job they've done and use a very innovative design that allows for different ranges of the furniture. It can be used for individual instruction, it can be used for group. Just a terrific design and a terrific craftsmanship. I have here some words from Mr. Wyman, her instructor in the cabinetmaking program. He was here this evening, but he had come straight from the funeral home. He had a death in his family, and I directed him to go to view of his family being, and Danielle was not here. But I do have his comments, and I'd like to read them to you. This is coming again from Mr. Wyman, her instructor. Through the two and a half years enrolled in cabinetmaking, Danielle has proven to be the best performer in every grading period, like selling in all grading categories consistently. Her workmanship in the lab shows her attention to detail and has been duly exercised on every project she has undertaken. The pride she exhibits in her project is evident, propelling her desire to first pursue post-secondary education and ultimately a career in the industry. Danielle is always prepared for class, attentive, and willing to help others. From assisting the sixth and ninth grade tours with their hands-on projects to volunteering her time after school to fabricate the outdoor learning center furniture, her active participation is deeply appreciated. Danielle, I commend you. This is just one unfortunate one. Danielle, I commend you on all your accomplishments here, Grady Laitrow High School, with the EWCTC, and your internship with the cabinetmaking program, but be a stepping stone to a wonderful and rewarding career. Mr. Wyman is obviously very, very proud of her and like me. Sad that she wasn't here this evening. Any questions about Danielle? Again, thank you for having us. See, we, I apologize, this is Danielle's next meeting.
Thanks so much. Sure.
We had lovely, on December third, there was a meeting. Very effective. We met Danielle there, she was present at the JAV meeting. I have to tell you, she's no bigger than this. And so for her to be in cabinet, which is a non-traditional student in cabinetmaking, was shaking very proud. My dad was a cabinetmaker, so he would love her, he would be there. And there's a detachment of her minutes from her JSC meeting that evening, and our next meeting is January twenty.
Okay, we'll move on. Mrs. Mains with education and planning.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Mr. Lucassio and Mr. Berkeley. Please, they have a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Mains. We're going to do this in two parts. I'm going to take care of the first part, just give you an overview of what the trip was about. And then Mr. Berkeley is going to very quickly go through some of the different things that we got to, we had the opportunity to see. You may recall that Mrs. Rogen had informed you that we were going to be going to San Diego. We flew out on Monday, November third, came back on Friday, November seventh. In all, we actually spent three days touring various bases in San Diego. This was an opportunity presented to us by the United States Navy. All expenses were paid by the Navy. And so, since neither Mr. Berkeley nor I require a substitute, there's actually no cost to the district for this opportunity. We were one of only two schools from western Pennsylvania that attended this. The only other school that had gone was Norman. They had been invited because of their new STEM initiative. And so the Navy is really going out to a number of schools that have strong STEM programs and trying to help us understand what kids would need as they're going into the Navy now. So it was truly a wonderful opportunity for us. You know, when we focus on transitioning students from high school, there are basically three main areas we're looking at. We're looking at post-secondary education, whether it's four-year, two-year schools, technical schools. Some kids go to work. And the third group are those kids who go to military. And without having served in the military, it's hard to truly advise kids as to what they could expect or what opportunities are available. So this orientation visit gave us better ideas to what opportunities actually exist. During one of our conversations, it was brought up that every career you can think of is probably related somewhere in the Navy with one exception, and that was veterinary science. That was the only thing that they actually had no connection. The Navy has a dolphin program, but that's contracted out, so to speak. They have some dogs, but there's another group that takes care of that. So that's about the only area that they aren't related to. We got to see so many of the opportunities that were available. There's too many to list here. But I have to tell you that every person we spoke to was always telling us about the advancement that they were going to get, what class they were going to be taking next, they were going to be going to an E-two, to an E-three, or E-five, to an E-seven. Those are the different pay grades as they move up. But everyone we spoke to was talking about where they're going to be going, both within the Navy and out. It gave us a better understanding for the expectations, including education. They talked about recommending coursework for students to be taking. And keep in mind, this was STEM-related, but I'm going to mention something not STEM-related that they brought up to us. So they recommended, gave us ideas regarding junior and senior high school, the value of the STEM-related course, and the fact that contrary to popular belief, Navy isn't making, quote, "just any more money." It is very, very competitive now. It gave us the opportunity to discuss firsthand with the sailors what life in the Navy is truly like. You know, not being able to, not having served, it's hard for us to tell kids what the expectations are. So the more we can learn, the better prepared we are to help them. And I found it amazing that when you think of the Navy, you think of them being out at sea. But they said probably for any enlisted person, probably twenty-five percent of the time they're out at sea, the rest, they're back and forth. And I kind of expected those numbers to be reversed. The other thing it gave us was an opportunity to network with members of the Navy who we could then bring back here to help us with the kids. And this has already occurred. Last week, we had, we have one student who is applying to the Naval Academy who has a strong interest in their nuclear program. The Navy is the only branch of the military that has a nuclear program. And even if you go to, say, West Point, you can't go from West Point to the Naval Nuclear Program, the Rickover School. So it's very selective. But we had a, actually, we had the Navy nuclear recruiter here to meet with. We made a couple of calls, got him down here. He was able to spend about a half hour one-on-one with one of our students who's considering the nuclear field. And it was really very, very beneficial to the student because the student has this great plan. Well, they sat down and they talked, and they helped that student get not only Plan One, Plan One A, and Plan One B. So, and they were focusing not on the naval component, but what do you want to do when you get out of the Navy? What is your goal, and how can we help you get to that? And they laid out three different ways to help that student get there, some of which did include the Navy, but others which did not. And so we found that to be very, very helpful. We also were able to get Chief Petty Officer Barncourt here. She's the Naval ROTC coordinator. And she was able to help us help other students who are not interested in the Naval Academy but who are going to be going to different schools and were interested in the ROTC program. And she was here to help them with that as well. We have another student who has already enlisted, has been accepted, and is in the EOD program. This is one of the slides that Mr. Berkeley will be showing you. That's the explosive ordinance disposal. And we were able to sit down with this young man for probably about forty-five minutes and to share with him what they had shared with us, stuff that he hadn't even heard of yet. And you'll get to see, Mr. Berkeley actually, one of the slides actually has the EOD uniform on. The, when we were there, they asked for volunteer, and I right away volunteered him to put it on and to walk around. That uniform is, that piece is between ninety to a hundred pounds. I don't need another ninety or a hundred pounds, so I readily volunteered him. I mentioned that this was a big focus on STEM-related courses. But I had the opportunity to have about a twenty to thirty-minute private conversation with Commander Calvert to ask him, okay, I've got kids who aren't interested in STEM but might be interested in the Navy. What do you have for them? And he gave me this whole list of things that those kids, I said, you know, for example, I've got a kid in Lake George who's really strong there. What do you have for them? And he just started rattling, communications, publications, public relations, human resources. He went right down the line. What was great is he offered to come here to the school as well, because that's his area of expertise. So that was great. One of the other things I actually got to appreciate while I was there is many people talk about equal opportunities for women. You know, there used to be a saying, you know, some people can talk the talk and they walk the walk. I have to tell you, when we were there, the first ship, in fact, the ship that you see on the screen here, the USS Essex, that's an amphibious assault ship, the largest ship that we had been on. And as soon as we got onto the ship, we were greeted by a Chief Petty Officer, who was a woman who took us through, she knew absolutely everything about that ship. And it was great to see how the sailors responded and reacted to her and the respect that they showed her. We had the opportunity while we were on that ship to also go up on the bridge and to get to meet with the personnel that drive the ship, including the ensign who actually steers the ship. I mean, the most important thing there can be. And she was also a graduate from the Naval Academy. So, you know, some people can talk about those opportunities, but here we were, we were seeing it firsthand, that it's not just for lip service. The ROTC coordinator that I mentioned to you, Chief Petty Officer Barncourt, is hoping to be in the group of the first enlisted women to serve on the submarine. She's up for that. They have officers currently, now they're going to be taking women on submarines. And I have to tell you, I haven't been on one, I don't know what the rush is. I will tell you this much, I don't want to spill any of Mr. Berkeley's thunder, but you know in the movies when they show you the area where they're commanding the sub and there's areas as large as this? We were on a Los Angeles class, the USS Pasadena, and it was about, oh, maybe one-fourth of that room. And if I'm standing here doing what I need to do, and someone wants to walk by, I have to move, turn it one way, they go through, I can, it's, there's not a lot of room. And so I don't know what they're really all excited about doing. It was interesting, but I don't know what the rush is. I much prefer being on the Essex. One final note before I turn it over to Mr. Berkeley. Our intent here is not to become recruiters for the Navy. That's not our job. Our job is to better educate our kids on the opportunities available to them. And that's our limit. We're not going out recruiting. If a kid comes in and has an interest in something, then it's our responsibility to help educate them the best we can. And this was a wonderful opportunity. I hope that our district has an opportunity to do it again. And for those of you sitting in your seats, they have advised us that they will take board members on the next one as well. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Berkeley, just going to take you through the different places we had the opportunity to see.
Mr. Lucassio mentioned that's the USS Essex. On day one of our tour, that was our first stop. They started, I guess, with the smallest paddle look they had, so be glad they obliged, they went on the ship. You can see there, the two pictures on the left, that's actually the weld deck of the back of the ship of the Essex. They have two options of, the one is the amphibious hovercraft at the top, where they can just come up the ramp and go right into the weld deck as it's dry. And then the other one's just a support personnel vessel, where they actually sink the back of the ship down to a certain level, and then the vessel just pulls right up into the ship. That ship itself is around eight hundred forty-four feet long, so it's pretty sizable. On the ship, this is, we blew this slide up. On the ship, this is, we blew this slide up because it's very pertinent, they were very excited, the only 3D printer of the entire Navy fleet is held on the USS Essex. And that is the...
Say that again? The only what?
The 3D printer that the Navy has in their entire fleet is on the Essex. And that is the, obviously, the flight deck map, also known as the Ouija board. And they were excited about it because they no longer have to pay thousands of dollars to different companies to make those little representations of each and every aircraft. They can just send it right down to the 3D printer and print it right on the ship. The second stop was the ship simulator. Left photo, I actually got to, we volunteered again to drive the ship through the harbor. So I got the steer and run the, you know, the speed of the vessel. And then on the right is actually the full-blown simulator, where the, in the center is the Petty Officer that was running the parking of a ship, lack of the terminology. It was basically parallel parking, one of the big Navy ships between a destroyer and a dock. So it was fascinating to see. As soon as you stepped up, where you had those side windows in your periphery, the whole room felt like it was moving. So it was very, very neat to see. Again, you talk about opportunities. The gentleman on the left in the blue shirt, he's a retired, I believe he was a captain of some private ships for 30-some years. The guy that runs the simulator, he was a retired Navy. He came out of the Naval Academy, but now he's working for this company. And then the gentleman that was overseeing the simulator on the right said that that sailor in the middle is a Petty Officer with virtually no experience doing this, but he did one of the best jobs he'd ever seen. So it was quite an opportunity to observe as there's about eight people in the harbor and you're parking out orders and everything's getting parked back, and it's very, very interesting. And there's the Explosive Ordnance Disposal unit. And I was the mini-pig, I got to put the suit on, and of course, they said, well, now you have a suit on, so let's bend over, pretend like you're using the X-ray on the ground. So that little box in my hand in the left photo is the X-ray box. In the center, there's a couple of the robots, the smaller two would be made by the company I, I robot, so we're familiar with the commercial. And then on the right, the gentleman has a, like a minesweeper, and then as well as some other materials there. And the lower on the table, there's a grid where they actually use to map out the different bombs. One of the most fascinating pieces that I thought were the actual devices they use to detonate bombs. Depending on what they're looking at, if they're looking at a briefcase, they use different devices using water. And they can take a water bottle, put a straw down it, put some, like, liquid C4 and an igniter in there, and then a trigger mechanism and blow something up. Or if they have a briefcase, they can take something that looks like one of those hot pretzels that you get from Sam's Club, has a piece of plastic in the middle, fires the water up in straight lines and will cut right through a briefcase or something that they want to look at. So again, very fascinating, very fascinating to see the EOD guys are unique in their, their training to take care of devices anywhere imaginable. So their training is very extensive, and it's very selective to get into that unit. And hopefully, our students that are going to graduate in 2015 will pursue that and continue to want successfully. Day two, we started the day off with what we got to actually view from our hotel on Coronado Base was the BUDS Training Facility, where the SEAL and SWCC members are training. The video, the photo on the left, their motto was "The only easy day is yesterday." And then in the center, Mr. Lucassio was looking for some devices for in-school suspension room. Or for moving illegally parked vehicles in the lot. And the photo on the right, that was actually from, we did a bay cruise, and we actually could see the helicopters dropping some SEALs into some of their training. And then the lower left, that's some of their, some of their tools that they like to talk to, different families. And that area is the grinder is what it's referenced. So all the trainees go through extensive physical training there. And on the right is their obstacle course.
We were not allowed to take pictures there. Except the pictures we have are pictures that they give us.
And this is the, on the grinder, also on the grinder, the bell. So each training class comes in, and depending on the size of the training class, 150 to 200, some people that want to be SEAL or SWCC crewmen, they'll come in in different phases. In Phase One, they can, if they quit, they have to come in and redevelop, but they're going down that line. So when we were there, there was, I'd say, 30, 40 helmets there, and they were in between the second and third week of the first phase. And each phase is about seven weeks long, so.
You would hear, middle of the night, because we were, we stayed right on the base, it could be 2:00 in the morning, and you could hear them out in the ocean, working and what have you. And then every so often, you'd hear ding, you know, you'd hear that bell go. You know, all hours of the day was, it was such, it really was, it was tough.
And when they were showing us the weapons, there was actually one that came in to drop whenever we were there. So it was a tough moment, it was our... Okay, there's the harbor crew. And on the top, in San Diego Bay, is the Midway. And we got to go right around the Midway in the water and see, you can see, one of the, you can't see it from this depiction, but the Midway has a golden anchors on the front. And the uniqueness about that is that's the Golden Anchor Award, it's been since then named like a retention award. But just like in schools, we strive for graduation rates, and in the military, they strive to retain as many Navy sailors as possible. So the ship that achieves the highest score about each year gets the anchor, anchor gold. If Mr. Lucassio ever achieved, no seats empty in the school, he has a flying pole. Below that, the USS Champlain on the left, and then the US Mercy, which is one of two hospitals in the world. One is stationed out of San Diego and one is stationed out of North Florida. And then down on the lower left, that's Commander Calvert, who's right out of the Pittsburgh office here. And there's Mr. Lucassio, and at that time, Mr. Lucassio was advising him on how to better park the ships in the harbor. And then on the right, that's just a prototype fast boat that they have. The USS Pasadena, these photos are just from online. This was the one part of the trip where we had the LeVall camera and electronic devices on the van before we went to, through two armed guard gates to get to the submarine. And then when we got to the submarine, just as Mr. Lucassio, and everything is tight, everything's confined, they took us down into the torpedo room where they can hold up to 24 torpedoes. And they were like, how do you get these 22 and a half foot torpedoes in here? And they said, remember that hatch you're climbing down through, that's the way they bring them down. And they bring them down, they had to crane them down, straight down through, and then there's about three levels of floor they take out, and then the wind system that they drop in, and they eventually get onto the torpedo room. And that's the, what was it, the Los Angeles class sub. Now the sub, they said about 150 sailors will be on that vessel, and now they are on to the Virginia class subs, and they're about to triple that.
There were 12 of us that got into the sub, and it was trapped then. I don't know why they got 150.
Last year, to tie it into, you know, past students, we had a student that was given the honor of the ROTC scholarship that's attended Penn State and not having to pay a penny for it within the Navy, and he wants to end up on a sub. Day three, we started it out with one of the units that the Navy hopes they never have to use, it's the Undersea Rescue Command. And these are the, this is the unit that would get called in if there was a difficulty with a sub underwater and the sailors were trapped. The two vessels on the left are the two capsules that if it's to a certain depth, that they would drop down into the water. That, the vessels would attach, and then the photo on the right is actually looking up through the vessel. Basically, I think it would hold about six sailors, they would crawl in there, they would seal everything up, and then they would crane it back up to the top.
And those are the only facilities that there are?
Yeah. For deeper depths, they didn't have it here, but there was another, like a mini submarine type device that would go down even further. But again, not, I think they said that would hold, you know, up to maybe 20 sailors.
The Navy had mentioned that those get called out, would be called out for anyone's sub, regardless of the Navy, which may be arranged, because nobody else has the capability.
And how deep were they?
I don't remember. They did say, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think these were just a matter of, you know, 700 pounds, but the sub itself was, I want to say, 2,000 years ago. The center photo is of one of the deep compression chambers, after they would bring them up. They would have to spend a considerable amount of time in that chamber, depending on how deep they were.
Up to three days.
And then the center picture is one of the deep-sea diodes that they have to use. And it's basically in this brain, brain mechanism, and then they drop it down in and everything's through propellers and stuff.
It has some propulsion system, because you can't move it in. I tried to get Eric in that too, but he wouldn't go with the one.
I'm sure he's going to get approved. And on that day, one of the stops was the Navy College, and this was a fascinating program as well. This is basically the opportunity for any of the sailors to achieve a college education while they were even on the boat. So they have teachers or professors that actually come out to some of the ships. A lot of them have online classes, distance learning type classes. And then with some of the different jobs that the sailors have, they, some of them just by doing their day-to-day duties are college graduates, just depending on what position they have. And then we finished up the third day with the Wildcard Squadron, which is one of the squadrons for the Nighthawks or Seahawks, which is basically the Navy's version of the Black Hawks. And those are used to drop the SEALs in if they need to. They're, in the right photo, you can see they're probably delivering mail or supplies to the ships that are taking it from them. They allow us to sit in the helicopters, you can see in the top right. And it was fascinating there to see, be excited. And we met with a pilot, and then we met with a mechanic. And one of the mechanics was originally trained for just one of the systems of the helicopter. But before he went out into the private sector and stopped his career in the Navy, he wanted to, he signed back on to learn another system so he'd be more marketable once he left the Navy.
Yeah, he had begun, as Eric said, as a mechanic, and the second time through, he was focusing on hydraulics and electrical systems, so that he could know the, you know, the entire machinery he could call on.
And that was the end of the day three. One thing I forgot to mention, whenever we were talking about the BUDS training, the SEALs training, we did have the opportunity to meet with a JAG attorney, diversity attorney, diversity officer there, that was excited that the Navy opened up the SEALs and SWCC to females. So they didn't, the standards are exactly the same as they've always been, but as soon as a female meets the standards, we'll welcome her to any position. Anyone have any questions? And I'd like to talk to me.
My son was an EOD, and he wears that suit every day. And when they are deployed, they take, he has 10 men, or he had 10 men in his platoon, he's a lieutenant, they take one whole container of water bottles, and they all have to lie. You never explained it that well.
And they have them, they each have their own section, and they go by groups, you know, and they don't get, they don't take somebody from one and from their separate teams.
Talking about diversity is very interesting. There's a woman in his platoon who is the linguist, and she speaks Parsi, Arabic, she speaks about six different languages. And she's always deployed in their platoon, but the problem is when they're deployed to the Middle East, she can't really do a lot because she's a woman and she has dress, I mean, she can't do her job and wear the clothes that she has to in their culture.
We had a US Air Forceman who was coming in October to take some of our foreign language classes.
Yeah, she's, he's very, very proud of the work she does for them. But I was, the reason I wanted to talk to you, Steve, is I may have a mentoring program where he mentors young students coming through the EOD program. And I'm sure he would be happy to do anything for us.
Anything else?
Thank you. Very good.
[inaudible]
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 Okay, intro to engineering and design. So it runs the CAD Lab software. It also runs the 3D printing software for the printers that you were able to see at the meeting two weeks ago. And the lab is currently running XP Windows operating system, which went end-of-life support in April. So it's part of a phasing that we've been doing over the last three years to upgrade all of those machines. Because XP's not being supported, there aren't security patches that are being produced for it. And a lot of the software and updates that are being written aren't written to work on XP. So our plan was, with fifteen, sixteen-year budget, that would be a replacement. But I do see a need with that lab in particular because of the 3D printers and because of the use, to maybe bump that up the timeline. And so that's why I've taken it to the technology department, talked again about, you know, the financing of that through the technology budget to just move that up from a fifteen, sixteen budget item to doing it now to give the kids the benefit of using the new printing software within. The second item that was on our agenda was the update of the broadcast and production studio at the senior high school. Mr. Lucassio had actually opened this up for conversation. Probably, I think he said it's been more than ten years, correct?
Almost fifteen.
Almost fifteen years ago, there was a company here in Littrop, and I know some of you were on the board at the time, Iris Technologies, Jerry Salangro, had donated equipment to the district to have a broadcast and production TV studio here in our high school. And since then, there really haven't been any updates to the equipment. So Acacia Howe, who's our broadcast teacher, does a lot of the work in an analog format, which is really a whole little format. Mainstream now is all digital. And so we were just starting to talk about the plans to upgrade that equipment, just discussing. I think there was one meeting on Friday with a particular vendor to talk about some options. No timeline for it, just generally planning that out. Just informational items I brought up, security camera system we're looking at for the district. We had talked about that before, getting some pricing. We had had some specs, met with the principals to talk about placement of the cameras, different items and options. And I believe in January, there will be a property and supply meeting to discuss that a little bit further. Again, just some informational pieces, really. Last spring, I administered a survey to students in grade 10 through 12. It was a technology survey evaluating mobile device ownership and its impact on student engagement and the role that technology plays in learning. And I had asked the technology committee about pre-administering that to grade nine and 10 students this year. I thought it'd be an interesting perspective to get their opinion, being that they're kind of newer to the whole BYOD platform. And I thought it was interesting to see the excitement of the ninth grade students that presented at the December 2nd meeting, being that they'd never really been part of that, they, you know, were really excited by it. And I think sometimes for the high school students, it's so just expected for them that maybe they don't, you know, have that same level of, I don't want to say appreciation because I'm sure they appreciate it, but just a different perspective on it. So I'll be anxious to see how those, how those views compare and I'll definitely be sharing that out with you guys. ECAT Academy always give an update on our enrollment. Currently, we have one student enrolled at the elementary level, one possible enrollment. We had started the year with zero there, so we have grown to one. Junior high, we have nine full-time students, two part-time. And at the senior high, we have eleven full-time and 29 part-time. Many more kids at the senior high level taking singleton courses. And full-time, that's a total of 20 students at the secondary level that essentially get their education through our own online program as opposed to maybe going to a outside institution to do so. So it's a huge savings for us and really a huge benefit for them because we're controlling the education of getting familiar with our teachers and the curriculum and the material that they're receiving. Plus, we're still regulating for student participating in any of our activities. The final thing that I talked about was just some general updates in the use of our student information system, eSchool Plus. Obviously, the app that was introduced at the December 2nd meeting, the big technology showcase that we did to kind of highlight what we're doing with technology. And also just trying to expand on our use of that system in general to be more efficient with what we're doing and to kind of consolidate our information to one central location in order to provide access to our principals, to our teachers, so that they can make the best decisions with all the information they can have about a student at their hands. And also looking into an IEP system that would coordinate with that. But we are really just starting the exploration phase of that. And I just gave a brief update, Dan, on the e-finance implementation. So I don't know if you recall, I think it was back in the spring, we had purchased a new finance system and we're kind of in the implementation phase of that. There's a lot of pieces, data that needs transferred. It's really a big job, but we are moving from a real legacy system that's been in place for a lot of years. So we're making a very big, giant leap forward as opposed to, you know, a system that maybe is only 10 years old. I think that kind of system's at least 20-plus years old.
Yes.
So, but we're going.
We can be able to access data and share data a lot more easily with the new system. We go live with the budget side of January 1st and with the payroll personnel quickly in April.
Any questions? Like I said, I have minutes for the next meeting. And the technology committee will not be January. Our next meeting will be in February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cozer, property and supply?
Yes, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 122, permission to advertise for the 2015-16 general school support.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passed unanimously.
And our next property and supply meeting, January 8th, at 3:30 Central. And that concludes my report.
Okay, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 125 and 126, approval of purchasing of tractor field equipment and equipment.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously as well. And that concludes my report, unless Mr. Meters says anything yet.
No, we haven't seen anything in January.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. George is not here for community relations, so does say the next, I'm sure the Harts Recreation Meeting will be this Thursday, December 18th at 4:30. And Mrs. Baines, possibly IU. Nothing really new, except the next WIU regular board meeting will be Tuesday, the 20th, January 27th, at 7:30 PM at the WIU building. Mrs. Elder, board policy?
No report.
Mr. Music, transportation?
No report.
I'd ask the board, excuse me, to move on Resolution Number 127, which is the approval of the revised physician handle.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 128, which is the resignations of Thomas Harper and Liz Craig.
So moved.
Moving in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on Resolution Number 129, which is the support personnel appointment, as well as Resolution Number 130, which is the support personnel supplemental.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All those resolutions passed unanimously.
And under other business are all of the dates of the holiday programs that are this week for the most part in the junior, senior high school as well as the elementary school. And our board meeting dates, our next meeting, the committee and the whole in January, is Tuesday, January 13th, with the, with the regular meeting following on Tuesday, January 20th. We'd like to wish everyone a very happy holiday from January.
Move to the adoption of Resolution Number 131, adjourn the meeting. Okay, hearing of visitors part two, if anybody has anything they want to discuss, wasn't on the agenda or even stuck it was, please step forward. All right, seeing none, now I will move for the adoption of Resolution Number 131, adjourn the meeting. And thank you. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.